Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting for June 2021. We're going to begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Benton. Please stand.
(Clerk) I am here to come and I will become on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation but deliver us from evil with one kingdom of power and glory forever and ever.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a public address. Want to turn this over to our attorney for a few words.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rick Green and I'm...
(Inaudible).
Sit down. Thank you. My name is Rick Green. I'm the attorney for Brunswick County Board of Education. We're about to enter the phase of public address. I think we have four, five folks who wish to speak to the board, and we welcome that. But I have to tell you that according to the policy 2310, discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters may be required to be kept confidential and may not be discussed in an open forum setting. The chairman will have the opportunity to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and can rule the speaker out of order if necessary. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and the total amount of time allotted is 20 minutes. And again, I'm seeing five speakers. Jenny Qualia is the first speaker. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Jenny Qualia. Very close, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I live in Oceanale Beach. I have two interrelated issues, both having to do with the endless push to remake our history and our culture. First of all, I pray this board will return prayer to this public meeting, not the moment of silence. You voted in closed session to eliminate prayer, and so one of you just needs to add it back on the agenda and vote on it publicly. I believe that your hidden vote isn't legally binding when it's about something that's part of the public agenda. The basis for prayer before public proceedings is consistent with longstanding tradition and case law will back you up. Its purpose is to lend gravity and to acknowledge the divine in our public institutions and our founding. I really don't care if some atheist group threatens a lawsuit. That's what they do. I don't care if they are offended. I am offended that it was removed. We cannot let a vocal radical minority dictate to our county. Our decisions here, when guided by God, are going to be better ones for all of us. We need God on our side. Now, the second issue, I have some simple questions, and I hope logic and morality will compel us all to find common ground. Do you think our schools should support the view that immutable traits like sex, race, ethnicity, or national origin of one child is inherently superior to another? Do you think our schools should support the view that an individual, by virtue of those immutable traits, is inherently racist, sexist, or otherwise prejudiced or oppressive? Do you think our schools should support the view that a person should be discriminated against because of the immutable traits attributed to them, or be treated on the basis of that classification? Do you think our schools should support the view that an individual's moral character is determined by the above-mentioned immutable traits, or that an individual, by virtue of the traits attributed to them, bears responsibility for the actions others committed in the past? Do you think our schools should support the view that any individual should be targeted with any form of distress due to the sex, race, ethnicity, religion, color, or national origin? If you answered no to all of these questions, you oppose critical race theory and its sister theories such as SEL, social emotional learning, the 1619 Project, the list goes on because the football keeps getting moved. Follow the bouncing ball. If you answered yes to some of these questions, you are facilitating the adoption of all of them. If you answered yes to all of these questions, well, then you have no business being on any board in this country, most especially a board of education. We cannot ban critical race theory fast enough. Every day that our children are being indoctrinated to hate or segregate themselves and each other is a day too long. Let's fight together for the minds and souls of our children. I'm almost done. If you may allow me to finish. Thank you. I am asking that all appropriate steps be taken to ban this dehumanizing propaganda. What are some of the things you might do quickly? Letters from the board to DPI and the governor, a resolution of opposition, layers and layers of protection we need, spelling it out in teachers' contracts, be vocal in public. There are plenty of resources to help you out, and I'd love to be one of those. We must prioritize excellence, which inspires people from all backgrounds to achieve their potential. Action, action, action. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[438.58][438.58](Applause). Is Mary Ann McCarthy here?
My name's Mary Ann McCarthy. I live in Southport. On April 16th of this year, Brunswick County unveiled its very own charters of freedom. Our Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson reminded us that these three documents are the blueprint or set of instructions that have enabled America to be the greatest nation on earth. Our forefathers brilliantly laid out the basis for the American idea that all men are created equal and are endowed by their Creator with unalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The goal of critical race theory is to destroy these very ideals we hold dear and to threaten the American way of life. Speaking of forefathers, did you know that NC teachers are being trained to not use that word anymore? Because our forefathers happened to be all white males. Did you know that last week DPI called for changes to its gifted program with admittance based on race instead of academic performance? Did you know that a member of the school board, or NC State Board, Mr. Ford, is a writer and an avowed political activist who is leading the charge for critical race theory using his position and the two consulting firms he leads to support critical race theory, activism, and indoctrination? He writes that he's encouraged to see teachers using their voices in movements like Black Lives Matter, that we need, what we need is an educational revolution where teaching is a form of activism. And he also says we need to start telling the truth about white supremacy in our schools. This man is a radical activist who financially benefits from selling racism and, in my opinion, has no place leading our educational system. Did you know that during NCDPI teacher training this spring, teachers from across the state participated in workshops where the teachers were encouraged to exclude or alter material that shows Christianity, homosexuals, two-parent families, and America in a favorable light? It featured sessions on whiteness while encouraging educators to form equity teams in schools to push the new narrative anti-racism, which, as we all know by now, is actually racism. One of the instructors had this to say, "We have to dismantle the idea of American exceptionalism, of Eurocentric white culture, and focus on minority cultures." Is this what the founders envisioned? Is this what Martin Luther King fought for? Did any of our Brunswick teachers attend this training? Do you know that some schools are violating students' privacy, which carries legal risks for the districts? They're using surveys to collect private data about family life, sexual preferences, and mental health, all in the name of SEL, or social emotional learning slash equity, of course. Are any teachers in Brunswick County participating in this? I've heard people say the new standards aren't too bad. Well, I've read them, and I think they're horrific. And if followed, we'll eventually have graduates who may not be able to read or do math, but they'll be great radical activists. I urge you to immediately stop the weaponization and politicization of our educational system. I urge parents to stand up, speak out about this divisive curriculum, and be counted. It's time for you to begin the process of ensuring that not one single child here in Brunswick County is exposed to this blatant anti-America racist indoctrination. We expect our tax dollars to fund schools and produce well-educated young adults who are prepared to become producing members of a civil society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[666.57][666.57](Applause). Next, Joan Hall. Good evening.
My name is Joan Hall, and I have read the information on the social study standards, and I find it very troubling. The board needs to have town meetings in the schools to tell the parents what they are teaching their children. Jim Ford, who developed the social study standard, is a radical race theorist. And that radical race theorist is to tear down and erase the history and the ideas that created American culture. The supporters of CRT believe American culture must be destroyed. I know the standards come from the state board, but you, Brunswick County representatives, are our link to them. You need to stand up to the plate for our children. Tell them the truth. We, the people, are against this program, and we do not want it in our schools. North Carolina's schools are ranked 38th in the country, 38th. We should all be ashamed of ourselves for that. And how about teaching our children better reading, math, writing skills, instead of social emotional learning? Let's teach them our history, good and bad, so that they will love our country. I've lived in Brunswick County for 19 years. What have you done with all of my tax money for education? I think it is really important for parents to start asking questions, because the more parents that ask more questions, it's harder for the schools to retaliate against them, eliminate this Department of Public Instruction, whatever that is, and give teachers raises. They deserve it. Parents need to be more involved and partnered with the boards of education. Now, our children will be taught a more concerned citizen, as a concern, I am more than a concerned citizen. I have a granddaughter in North Carolina public schools. My family is biracial. How would you feel if your child or your grandchild called you racist or white supremacist? This is what is happening to our biracial families. I am very concerned about the survey. The students are asked to fill out. The information goes to a global company called ISKME, and with all the hacking that is now going on in this system, we are putting our children's information at risk.[865.82][865.82](Music). I want to end up by saying I want to send a message to everyone that is listening to me. Ask your children what they are learning in schools and do your own research. Thank you.
Thank you.[885.62][885.62](Applause). Next, we have Mr. Mel Foles.
My name is Mel Foles, and I live in Leland. Members of the school board, you have an awesome responsibility. You are responsible for what our children are being taught in the classroom. As you well know, our greatest natural resource is our children, the greatest gift the good Lord ever gave us. Now, some of you have skin in the game, in that you have your own children attending schools here in Brunswick County. I'm sure you have some concerns, as do I. One such concern, using the ideology, philosophy of the CRT in our school system, here and throughout the country. Critical race theory was brought to my attention by various news media and also my daughter, who has two girls in school. We decided that we needed to do more research. Fortunately, I received a periodical from Hillsdale College in which Chris Ruffo of the Claremont Institute, a political think tank in DC, delivered a lecture at Hillsdale College to the faculty and students there explaining CRT. It stems from a Marxist theory and philosophy, pitting one class of people versus another. I guess what they're saying here is that we're going to put all the white students in one classroom and tell them how bad or how oppressive they've been to the brown and black students, perpetuating systemic racism. This is a discriminatory philosophy. The whole premise is based on the color of the skin and not on the content of their character, as Martin Luther King espoused. This is also anti-Christian. If you look in your Bible, chapter, or the Gospel of Mark, chapter 12, verse 28, "A command given by Christ to the religious scholars at that time, which was true then and is true now, is love your neighbor as yourself." At a time when our country is so divided, the implementation of this ideology will further divide us. This would violate a multitude of civil rights laws, treating people differently according to race. Many states have banned teaching CRT, and one such state is Texas. Their new bill requires a state Board of Education to adopt civic education to help students' understanding of the moral, political, and intellectual foundations of U.S. history and traditions. I don't know why that can't be our basis as our philosophy in educating our students. Lastly, my brother, who's a 30-year veteran of the military, has got an iron bar down to his back being thrown around in a helicopter, was here over Memorial Day, and we discussed the CRT topic. This is divisive. We also talked about Normandy. June 6th was D-Day. 4,000 men died invading Normandy that day. They didn't die for CRT. They didn't care who was black, who was white, who's pink, who's orange. We are one people created by God, living in a great country. Let's look forward, not behind or not in the rearview mirror. Do everything you can to get rid of this CRT philosophy. I'm going to, never mind, I wasn't going to call it crap. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1159.42][1159.42](Applause). Next, we have Ms. Emily Donovan.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. At the beginning of 2020, Brunswick County made national news for having some of the highest levels of PFAS in tap water per nationwide study. Today, we still have high levels of PFAS in our tap water. I have faith in the employees at Brunswick County Public Utilities. I know they are doing all they can to better, to build a better treatment plant and remove these industrial forever chemicals. However, the new water plant will not be completed for another two and a half years, assuming no major hurricanes, tornadoes, or construction delays impact progress. Until the county can provide a long-term solution to our water crisis, it is the responsibility of the school board to ensure every child has access to health-protective drinking water in the short term at the point of use for cooking and drinking. I provided guidance and recommendations to Brunswick County Schools and the New Hanover County School Board early last year. New Hanover County School Boards even invited me to give a presentation at one of their board meetings. I'm willing to do the same for your committee meetings later this month. The nation is watching us. You have a unique opportunity to be the heroes of this story. Based on emails with operational staff, Brunswick County Schools only installed one reverse osmosis filling station per school, where New Hanover County installed three. However, Brunswick County did replace all water fountains with touchless filling stations that use activated carbon filters. Many of these filters begin to clog after six months and must be replaced. Replacing activated carbon filters every six months for every fountain in every school, I imagine, is costly. It's also wasteful. To my knowledge, spent filters saturated in PFAS cannot be recycled. This is why I initially recommended leasing multiple RO filling stations and placing them strategically at each campus to accommodate recess, athletics, cafeteria use, and high traffic, easily accessible areas. RO is the most effective at removing PFAS and requires less frequent filter maintenance. The leasing of these systems would be temporary until the county can provide the long-term solution. Addressing this now, before summer school starts, is a great opportunity to further protect developing students immediately. We know PFAS bind to proteins. We know they alter us at a cellular level. We know they are in our blood, per local serum studies. We know we were chronically exposed to these chemicals at alarming levels and are still being chronically exposed to them in our finished tap water. We know they cross the placenta and contaminate breast milk. We know they are in the liver and brain tissue of local seabirds. Recent studies also show some PFAS weaken our sacred blood-to-brain barrier. We also know the CDC ATSDR issued the following statement at the start of the pandemic. "CDC ATSDR recognizes that exposure to high levels of PFAS may impact the immune system. There is evidence for human and animal studies, from human and animal studies, that PFAS exposure may reduce antibody responses to vaccines and may reduce infectious disease resistance." I encourage each of you to be proactive. Upgrade your leasing agreement and install multiple RO filling stations per campus. Correctly and clearly label these machines, publicly promote their presence, and encourage widespread use. The last thing I want to see is for Brunswick County Schools to top yet another nationwide tap water study for failure to correctly or appropriately address this public health crisis. It's absolutely avoidable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1381.61][1381.61](Applause). Next on the agenda is the board salute. Mr. Siemens.
First up is glad, it's good to see everybody's face and good to see people back in in a full room with all the chairs available. That is, it's a huge, I don't know, huge feeling. These are community meetings, and we like to be, you know, have the community together. Speaking of that word, our school logo has the phrase "Community of Learners" in it. The community of learners is vast. It's what I call the Brunswick County Schools' family, the BCS family. That is the students, that is the folks who pick up those students before the sun comes up, that is the teachers in front of the students, that's the folks who clean the schools and make sure they're safe, everybody inside the schools, and everybody in the community too, because we are a community of learners. And in the house tonight is a prime example of some, I don't, I mean, community support, but at a level taller than my 5'9" stature. The city of Southport, who is very kind to our Southern schools, Southport Elementary, Southport, South Brunswick Middle School, and South Brunswick High School. What we're looking at here is Mayor Haydom presenting a check, and I know the print's a little small in the picture, but it's a one with 0000, $10,000. I would like to ask Mayor Haydom to come join us at the podium.[1501.15][1501.15](Applause).
Principal Bourne, would you come join us too?
So first off, thank you, Mayor. We want to present you with a small token of appreciation, certificate of appreciation. But first, if you could share a few words with us just about what went into a donation of this size?
Right. Well, thank you. And it is good to see everyone without a mask and being together. It's just marvelous. I can't wait until our meeting on Thursday so everyone will be together like this. It's a pleasure to see several of my friends on the board. Mr. Robinson, Mr. Vardick, good to see you. Good to see all of you. I am a product of the elementary school system in North Carolina. I went to Rosemary School in Run-up Rapids, and I tell people that I remember my first grade teacher, Annabelle Daughtry, because she taught me how to read. I remember not being able to read, so I will forever be grateful to her and the elementary school system. So for Southport to be able to donate $10,000 to the elementary school, it is something that we are proud of and that what we want to continue to do. We're so happy to have this school in our city, and one of the most important things that we have in our lives, the gift that our parents gave us, is an education. They made sure that we went to school. And my father, God rest his soul, he said, "You can go to school as long as you make good grades." And that poor man sent me to college for 11 years. So I appreciate that, you know. So it's wonderful, and it starts at the elementary school system. And so we're grateful to do it, and we will continue to do it as long as I'm mayor. That's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Principal Bourne, do you want to share a couple of words about maybe what this will all mean for the school?
Well, I just wanted to extend my sincerest thank you to Mayor Haydom and the city of Southport, especially from the students and the teachers. Your gift is very generous and very much appreciated. Our school improvement team, which consists of teachers and administration and parents, have decided to use this money for a curriculum resource. They would like to purchase a program called iReady that helps to foster students' reading ability and math ability. So we are very excited, and we couldn't do it without your donations. So thank you very much.
We're happy to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you so much.[1667.15][1667.15](Applause).
I'd like to close out, if you don't mind. Chairman Lemon, with a couple more photos. We wrapped up last week our Class of 2021 graduations. As we all know, these seniors have been through it all in their, in their high school career. And thank you, Mother Nature. We only had one, we're looking at South Brunswick, we only had one little bout with Mother Nature during these highly successful just celebrations for the seniors. But this was, I wanted to showcase, just in case anybody missed them, they can go to the BCS YouTube page, watch these services again. If they have a family member who did, who missed out, let them know about it so that they can see their family member, their student, walk across the stage. So we've got, that was South Brunswick High School. Here, we have North Brunswick High School, sun shining especially bright in the scorpion's land. Early college kicked it off, and they shared the facility of West Brunswick High School. That was a couple weeks ago to get, get the facilities or the festivities going. And then finally, we have West Brunswick. They closed it out last week, and another beautiful service. But I just wanted to bring these up, to remind everybody, in case they missed them, they get a chance to go see the Class of 2021, take that walk again.
Mr. Siemens, could you speak to the social media analytics that you discussed yesterday?
We were in cabinet meeting, we went, and you know, the beauty, social media is obviously, I mean, it's by far the best way to communicate in today's world. I mean, it's statistically, you cannot beat it. And while we were at the cabinet meeting, we were talking about the graduations, and so I pulled up our Facebook page just to see what our stats looked like. so I pulled up our Facebook page just to see what our stats looked like. And last week, the one, seven, seven days, and wrote our analytics, our impact, our reach, and our engagement, yesterday was up 354%. I, I, this morning, when I got in, I looked at it again, and it just had bumped up one more day to include, and it jumped up an additional to just over 600,000. No, the reason, it's not, the reason we talk about it is because it's, it helps showcase, that means we have a presence, people around the internet world, you know, around the world are seeing some of the amazing things that are going on in Brunswick County. So we're just going to continue to capitalize on that. And we're very fortunate that so many people did get to witness our Class of 2021 take those steps in such a wonderful service.
Thank you, Mr. Siemens. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have the meeting agenda. Are there any corrections needed to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Lemon, I would like to take off of the consent items, the improvement plan for social-emotional learning and school mental health. I think this needs to be discussed, looked at. I would like to read more about it. I think it aligns with the critical race theory, and I would like to have that taken off, please.
No, we disagree.
Okay, I'm agreeing with her. I'm allowed to agree with her, Mr. Benton.
Okay. Any others?
I'd like, we need to strike action item three, if we could. We're not prepared for that.
Action item?
Action item number three, board committee structure.
Okay.
We're still, it's still work in progress at this point.
Any others?
Mr. Lemon, I would, before we go any further, I'm almost shaking inside when I hear the people that came forward to talk about critical race theory. I stand with you. I have been sounding the alarm the last couple of meetings. I've talked to several parents about it. I've encouraged people in the meetings to go and look at the social studies standards. I have a huge problem with it, and I just want you to know where I stand on it. I have a graduate of 2019, I had a senior that just graduated last week, but I still have a sophomore, a rising sophomore going through school. It's very upsetting to me to know that our children are being indoctrinated. And I just, my heart was pounding when you guys were talking. I don't agree with it. I don't think anyone should be made to feel different about this color of their skin, whether you're black, brown, white, or yellow. That should not be an issue. We should not create division, hate. We should not ask our teachers to teach it. So I don't agree with it, and I don't want that to go unsaid from me. When I When I look at the packing documents, it's a very sly thing that they're doing. They don't really use a lot of the terms, but the euphemisms are there. And I was reading the social-emotional learning, I called Mr. Robinson, and I was on the phone with him about it today. And I said, "We can't allow this to go through tonight." That's why I wanted to take it off. So I just want you to know, and I know others on the board agree with it. We've talked to Dr. Oats about it.
We don't agree with critical race.
Right, we don't agree with critical race theory. And as I said in the last meeting, we have to be the gatekeepers to our kids' education. And having one in school, and who I'm really concerned about are the little humans. You know, the little ones that are in K1, 2, 3, his kids. You know, I've got two, they're out. And thankfully, they've not been indoctrinated. They're in college, they're getting plenty of it there. But, you know, we've been able to raise them in my family how we would, how we believe, and that's not the school's responsibility. Parents should be able to raise their children the way they feel. And we should not discriminate against any child. We should not make any child feel bad about their skin color or anything, their religion, their sex, anything that should not be taught in school. So that's just where I stand. I appreciate you guys coming and talking about it, and I'm with you. I'm with you.
Mr. Lemon, if we could, Ross, pull item 12. I'd like to pull item 12, just to discuss before we approve it.
Say it again.
Item 12 on the consent agenda, I'd like to move that to an action item and just discuss if there's an alternative, maybe that might be fairer to those folks who are currently in that position.
Just move that to number three.
Yeah.
Replace it with three.
Four, four, because you got number three, Ms. Moffett pulled. So it'd be item number four.
She removed it completely.
We have to do that in the action section.
Put it on there and remove it, then.
Yeah.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
We'll have to approve the agenda as revised, please.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is there a move? Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have minutes from the meeting, the regular meeting of May 4th, and the committee meetings on May 18th. Are any corrections needed to these minutes?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Barker, seconded by Mr. Benton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have the consent items listed with number one And what was the other?
12.
12.
I make a motion to approve, 2 through 11.
Second, Mr. Benton's motion.
Mr. Benton makes a motion to approve consent items 2 through 11, seconded by Mr. Barker. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Action items for approval tonight, new district phone system. Who is, Ms. Bear?
Good evening, board members. Little background to this project, an RFP was posted on April 26, 2021, and the district received responsive proposals from offers. A new phone, the phone system project was presented to the finance committee on May 18, 2021. The best bid most advantageous to Brunswick County school needs was from Dysis Solutions, Inc. A part of their proposal, the voice-over IP services are to be contracted with a third-party vendor. The project requires that we enter into two separate contracts with these vendors. The first contract is with Intelipier Cloud Communications LLC for the voice-over IP services. The second contract is with Dysis Solutions, Inc., for the implementation of the new phone system, which includes network equipment, cellular failover equipment, new phones, educational licensing, and professional engineering services. Technology recommends approval of the first contract with Intelipier Cloud Communications LLC for $83,921.52 over three years. This represents annual reoccurring costs of $27,973.84 per year. The contract will be funded from local budgeted telephone expenditure accounts. The second contract with Dysis Solutions, Inc., for three years, totals $876,086.96. This contract will be funded from the allotted technology bond funds. Year one compensation of this contract is $580,355.30, and years two and three are each $147,865.83 for annual renewals of the educational licenses. Technology recommends that the board forward this second contract to the county for approval since it exceeds $300,000 and it's being paid through the bond.
I have a question, if I may. Have we checked the technology to make sure we're, it is not vulnerable to cyber attack or any of those kind of things? Is it well-secured, that we don't have to worry about student information being taken, phone calls listened to, and/or being shut down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's compatible with all of our current technology?
Yes, sir.
And I also believe Dr. Oats mentioned, talking about that fact before, the interface with the laptops and the phone communications in the classroom.
Second, Mr. Robinson's motion.
The motion is to approve the recommendation for the phone system by Mr. Robinson and Mr. Barker, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Quick question, Ms. Bear, while we have you up there. With all the controversy about school systems and businesses and so forth being attacked by malware, how are we protected? Is it, is it all local protection, or is there through the state software?
Many different layers. The state gives us a lot of resources at the state level. Our internet connection is through MCNC, and there, they have funded a lot of services that watch the connection coming into Brunswick County for malicious activity. We also watch it at our firewalls and protect it there. We put malware protection on those firewall connections. We have malware protection on our devices that are used every day by people within our district. One of the recent things we did was cyber training. A lot of our staff have went through cyber training that the state purchased for us, where they're being trained on how to identify things like phishing that's occurring through emails, which is a popular way for us to be attacked. So we're educating our staff, we're protecting our devices, we're watching our outside barriers. The state is watching traffic coming to us, so many levels.
Do you happen to know how Columbus County was attacked? How they got through? Oh, you may not know that, but it's only been a year or so ago.
I think it was through being vulnerable to having legacy-type of systems, not new, updated, more modern systems, was one of the factors.
I'd rather be safe than sorry when it comes to this issue, so anytime that you want to recommend to any of us that we need to take a strong, stronger look at what we're doing and do we need more protection, please feel free to do that, so.
Another, I'm trying to think of all the things, there's so many things being done. One of the things that the state did was purchase a service to where we had engineers come in and look at our entire system and tell us where we were vulnerable and where we could make changes. And so they held us to an extremely high standard in the industrial world, not just because we were educational, but, you know, same that they would hold for
How long ago was that?
Yeah, nine months or so ago. So we were scored on how well we were implementing that as well.
Okay.
And gave us many topics that we can continue to modify and grow on. So it's, it's always changing.
Okay, well, thank you for the information.
Yes, sir. We've also purchased a insurance policy for cyber attacks. We have a basic amount with our school board association, but we've purchased an additional one for higher coverage.
Next item is the board policy 7720.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to make a motion, this be approved tonight on the first reading and we waive the second reading. While I agree with Ms. Moffett, what she said before, I believe now is the appropriate time for all of us to explain our opinions. And I believe this policy right here protects us against not only critical race theory, but all of the misinformation that's out there regarding history. And this is our protection against that. This is a board policy in which we actually have, you know, the legal authority over our employees if we find out that it's being taught. And as Ms. Moffett brought up before, and we all agreed with her, having our anonymous reporting system, just like we do for bullying, for bias in teaching.
We do hear all of you.
And we do agree with you. But I'm going to sign on to things that are going to help us prevent biased teaching, and this policy is one of them. So I recommend it for approval tonight and waive the second reading.
Second.
We're going to have to present it first.
Pardon?
We've got to present the policy, right? We have to read it first.
Do we have the policy?
We have to read the policy before we can make a motion on the policy.
That's correct. Do we have the policy? It's linked on the agenda.
Yeah, I read it as well.
Mr. Chairman, I will be glad to take you through the policy.
Yes, sir.
Policy 7720, which outlines employee political activities. It's a standing policy that we adopted in 1994. The crux of this standing policy is basically making sure that political activity shall not take place during school time, involve school monies, equipment, or materials, or make use of an official school position to encourage or to coerce students or other employees of the district to support in any way a political party candidate or issue. As we go down the last revised paragraph of this policy, this policy should not be construed as prohibiting the impartial study and discussion of political or controversial issues in the classroom setting, including the dissemination of factual information about serious problems the school system or the community may be facing because of political actions. Where such teaching or information reasonably relates to the standards of the course, both sides of the political issue shall be presented, supported by primary or balanced secondary sources, so that students are provided an opportunity to be well-informed and to be able to make their own decisions regarding political or other controversial issues. Further, this policy shall ensure that social theories of any kind, for example, Holocaust denial theory, the 9/11 theory, and critical race theory are not presented to students unless approved by the Brunswick County Board of Education. It is the responsibility of the board to ensure that curricular standards are taught using well-documented, factual resources and not opinion or conjecture.
Any other comments?
My previous motion still stands.
Mr. Barker makes a motion that we approve this policy change on first reading. I think Mr. Robinson, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The next policy is 2310, public address to the board. Do you have that, Dr. Oats?
It too is being shown. This is a minor change to the existing policy to give speakers who wish to, community members who wish to speak at board members more time in contacting our office to do so. And the change is simply to be able to contact our office by 12 noon on the day of the Board of Education meeting. That is the only change in that.
Since that's not a major change, do anybody want to recommend we waive it?
We can waive the second reading. I make a motion, we waive the second reading.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Benton makes a motion, we may waive the second reading and make that change. And Mr. Robinson, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Dr. Oats?
Nope.
Any other discussion items?
It's the critical, now it's the social-emotional learning, Ms. Moffett has pulled off consent. Because we pulled it off consent, so it would now go on as an action item. Dr. Oats, do we have a deadline on when that plan has to be submitted to the state?
July.
Okay, so we have time.
Yeah, I think it's end of the month, July 1st.
Our committee meeting is next week. I said we'd discuss it then.
I agree.
All right, so we'll take it.
We'll just move that to committee meetings. What was the fourth?
It'll be on curriculum, correct?
Is the critical staff incentive. I wanted to just see how everybody felt. I, I wanted to just see how everybody felt about possibly moving to a flat bonus for those folks who are already in those critical needs positions. So instead of incentivizing people to switch positions, and one or two people get a $5,000 bonus who've been teaching with us, maybe we consider doing something like a $1,000 annual bonus on those positions, so that those folks who have been, had 20 years of service in these critical areas are still eligible for some money, because it's just not fair to those folks who've been in these positions forever to not be eligible for bonuses. And I just want to float that by the board, I still have
Mr. Foster, you going to review that?
I'll be happy to, just to get us back to what got us here to have it on the consent agenda. Back on May 4th, during the Board of Education committee meeting, we approved, or you approved, the $5,000 recruitment incentive for fully certified new hires into math, exceptional children's teaching, or CTE construction positions. We brought back to you, there was a question regarding whether someone who was currently an employee with us who became licensed or had a license in one of these critical incentive areas as an EC teacher, or a math teacher, or a CTE construction teacher, whether they would be eligible for the critical staff incentive. And I presented back to you on, at the last, on May 4th, indicating that we would recommend that if someone had not served in a critical staff position during the 2021 school year, and they were fully licensed, that it would be helpful to us to be able to pay those folks the $5,000 incentive to move to one of those critical areas. At that point, you guys asked to put it on the agenda for tonight, and that's where we are. And so I was bringing forward with the recommendation that we would approve the trend, the ability of current employees who had not served in a critical staff position during the 2021 year be eligible for this critical staff incentive.
And what was the change you were
I wanted to see if we could offer $1,000 a year for these folks. That way, the folks who are currently in the positions would still be eligible for money. I mean, I, I think it's wrong that, we're both teachers, you've been teaching math for 20 years, I've been teaching kindergarten, and now I want to switch to become an EC teacher or a math teacher, and I'm going to get $5,000 for doing the same job as you are. We've both been working in the system, we're not relocating from another school district, and I'd like to see us both get $1,000, run a bonus for these folks that are in these positions that have been here and been loyal to us. I, I just still, I, I think there's inequity there when we're giving one person for switching a position, money. I mean, I understand why we're hiring outside folks. They're relocating from other districts here, they have home moving expenses, they're taking a risk on leaving New Hanover or Pender to come to us, I understand that, and paying for that risk, but when we're internal, we're giving three or four people in the county the opportunity to switch titles of their position for $5,000, and we're like, forget the rest of you who've been in these positions for years, providing us great service and being loyal to us, and I just feel it's not, it's not equitable to them.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Could we take a look at the dollar amount that would cost prior to doing that? Because I want to get, make sure you have accurate information in your decision making.
Ms. Freya, can you have that made, by the middle of the month meeting? Okay.
Yeah, our committee meeting's next Tuesday. That was my question is
Right.
Ms. Cahill's good with numbers, I don't know if she's that good on top of her head, so.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Oh, it's twenty second?
Okay.
Mr. Foster, delaying that, is that going to create a problem, if we do continue to delay that?
We have moved forward with the new hires from outside the district, because there was not a question about whether or not that part was approved. That was approved before, so we've not
It would just add to our people's loyalty here.
Was whether or not we could provide that incentive to internal candidates who were switching positions, and it wouldn't necess, I mean, it could even be a teacher assistant who got their certification and could go into one of those positions. And that's, those were the types of things that we wanted to try to open that avenue up to, again, help us fill those critical needs areas.
Instead of the previous one we passed, we did, the teacher assistants, because they weren't teachers, were qualified. Am I correct, Dr. Oats?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we are, they are qualified, so it would just be teachers switching from one position to another.
Yeah, and so even as it stands right now, we are able to use it as a recruiting tool for teachers outside the district. It's only teachers within the district that the question was about.
And just to be clear, we're speaking of all of those in the critical needs category, not just EC, correct?
Correct.
To receive the
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So internal employees just cost out what it would take
If you could.
For $1,000 for each one of them.
Yes. We could, a one, oh, if we could do it, yeah, as long as we're running a critical incentive, so each year we would approve it, and that, and we would not be paying, if I'm not mistaken, because it's a one-time critical needs thank you, it would not, we wouldn't have any other costs associated with that, correct?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
I think we're down to discussion announcements by superintendent and board members.
The only thing I just want to not even discuss and announce, just to give congratulations and thanks to, is to the hard work that our high schools put out this past week for graduation, and not only our high school graduation committees, but our operations department in making sure that everything was flawless. So Ms. Rutledge, hats off to you and your team for what you've done to make the, the outdoor graduations that we haven't had in some time very appealing. I don't know about all of you, but the feedback that I have received regarding having them on the stadiums was enormous, enormous support for doing it. I can't say what the future holds, but if, if umbrellas and, and heat is stopping us from doing it, if you can cope with the, the heat and, and the rain, you know, we, I'm all for it. I mean, I don't mind sitting down, we sat out in the rain under, somewhat under your umbrella the other day, and
I wasn't under, she was resting on my head.
But they did a very fine job. I was very proud of all of the graduates, all of the schools, from, from early college to West, everything was just beautiful. Couldn't ask for a better end to a tumultuous year.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
And I want to thank you, Sue, for, I mean, it was amazing, and I have a senior, so it meant a lot to me, and I think, I have seniors and kids at my house all the time, and they were just saying that they felt such a sense of pride to walk onto their home field, their school colors, in their stadium that they've attended for four years of football games, and soccer games, and lacrosse, and it was beautiful. I mean, you, and the, the turf covers were perfect, and, you know, it just went off without a hitch, and we did sit in the rain, but it was okay, and the kids didn't mind it.
Well, next year, another school can sit in the rain, and you can have a sunny day.
That's right. North and West came off without a hitch, but, you know, it's okay, and the kids that's out, they didn't seem to mind that they sat in the rain, they just said they were thankful they got on the field. And I don't think they're opposed, like Dr. Oats said, to considering doing it at the home turf, you know, from here on out. It just meant something to them in the sense of pride of being in their home stadium. I liked it, it's kind of cool.
Any other announcements?
I've got a couple of things I just want to add. I'll be quick. You know, over at West Brunswick and North Brunswick, over the past two months, we suffered two student losses, and I wanted to commend the staff over at those schools. They've done a phenomenal job of getting the schools through this tragedy, and also reaching out to the community. Both schools, great job, under very tragic circumstances, and, you know, the one over at West was a standout football player, there was a memorial service. I don't know that I've seen that many people in the stadiums in a long time, and I appreciate the leadership that Coach Hickman and all the other staff put into that. That was very impressive, and I appreciate the speakers who came tonight as well. You know, it's going to take us all to address this issue, just the board alone won't be able to, to do it. It's going to take the community to address these issues, and just like I said, we can't do it alone, so we're going to need community support in order to do that. And so please work with us in, to make these changes. I want to thank Mayor Haydom, also, and the city of Southport for coming out with that donation, that was much appreciated. And lastly, we've already said it, but the graduations were just phenomenal. I, I've gotten, in addition to what Dr. Oats stated, the outcry for the, to continue this has been overwhelming, so hopefully, we'll be able to figure this out in the future. Like I talked with Ed earlier, you know, we, we were sort of fortunate, the weather mostly cooperated. I know how junes can be in Brunswick County, but being on home turf was great, it was unbelievable, and these, these stadiums looked good. Back when I graduated years ago, was at West Brunswick, you know, we did it at the auditorium, but the football fields then were a disaster. We had mold crickets.
I think, I think that was the principal's fault.
It, it was great.
For those that don't know, Mr. Lemon was Mr. Robinson's principal.
So, but a great job, given that, you know, it was wonderful, and that, that's all, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We have a motion to go to closed session, please. A motion put forward by Mr. Benton, and we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Moffett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.